Came down here fifteen minutes early, so we'll have to hear your mouth.
Good morning. I'd like to call to order the September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. We have with us today for our invocation Reverend Johnny Fitz. She's a Minister of Intercessory Prayer at Mount Olive AM Zion Church in Pritchett. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let us pray. Father, we come before you this morning thanking you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. We come before you this morning to lift up our county commissioners. I ask, Father God, that you would continue to bless and keep Commissioner Ludgood, Commissioner Hudson, and Commissioner Doitt. We thank you, Lord, for their willingness to serve the people of this county. We thank you, Lord, that they are taking on the responsibility of leadership. Lord, give them wisdom and discernment in decision-making. Give them the courage to act in the public's best interest. Give them integrity in their roles as they serve the citizens of this county. Give them a spirit of service for the well-being of all citizens. Help them to speak for the vulnerable and give them the humility to listen to the voices of their constituents and to each other. We pray that they would govern by love, justice, and your righteousness. And, Lord, bless them. Bless their families with peace as they fulfill these sacred duties. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we have two special guests that we'll hear from. To address the commission first is Heather Herrera from Altupoint Access to Care and nine eight and the nine eight eight lifeline, here to talk to us about what it does, why it's important, and its observation of its national day today.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here. As the Commissioner said, I'm Heather Herrera. I am the Assistant Director for Altupoint's nine eight eight Lifeline Center, as well as the Access to Care Department. For anyone not familiar with nine eight eight, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline Center switched over to the three-digit nine eight eight number in July, two thousand and twenty-two, and it serves as the universal number for the suicide prevention hotline now. It is also for mental health crises, not just suicide prevention. So, we try to make sure everyone understands that any crisis can be handled through nine eight eight. We work hard to bring awareness for the importance of mental health and substance use issues in the community and across the nation, and we hope that nine eight eight made it easier for access similar to nine one one. So, it's an easy number to remember, just like nine one one covers medical or life-threatening issues, crime. Now, we have nine eight eight as the mental health crisis line. So, today is nine eight eight day, nine eight, of course, and this is Suicide Prevention Month, the month of September. And so, our goal is for nine eight eight, or for nine eight to be a day of action. And so, we like to, we're trying to bring awareness of the importance of mental health and substance use concerns and educate and bring about just as many resources in the community as we can and encourage those in the community to continue talking and having conversations with anybody that they suspect might be having mental health concerns or struggles, as many of us do. And so, the more that we can have conversations about suicide prevention, you know, the more that it becomes a little more natural because it is a difficult conversation to have with anybody. And so, we encourage anybody that's concerned about a friend or a loved one, family member, if you have any concerns, you can call nine eight eight on their behalf, and we're happy to talk you through some next steps, maybe some coaching on how to have those tough conversations with those friends and loved ones. And then, as well as, of course, the person themselves can always call as well, and we make it as easy as possible. I know that there's many generations that prefer chatting or texting, so if they don't want to make the phone call to nine eight eight, they're able to just text nine eight eight and immediately speak with or chat with a crisis counselor who is trained in that manner as well. And so, you know, they can remain anonymous if they choose to, and that also, that provides a lot more comfort, especially we get a lot of calls from teenagers who may not want to reveal their identity, but they're at least able to get that resource and that support during a difficult time. We have found that the more that we can spread the word, the more calls come in. I don't think that it's causing any kind of crisis. I just think that it's allowing people to understand the resource is there at their fingertips. About a year ago, our average at our local Lifeline Center was about four hundred and fifty calls per month. Now, currently, a year later, we're up to about eleven hundred per month, and we feel that's just because we have been spreading the word. People are finding out about it, you know, whereas they may have called nine one one in the past, now we're able to take a little load off of nine one one when it is a mental health crisis that a counselor can de-escalate or connect to outpatient services or even inpatient services at that time. We have times when we do work hand-in-hand with nine one one as well. You know, there are some more severe calls that require both efforts, and so, the emergency services in all of our areas that we have to seek it have been wonderful in responding. We're able to communicate with them and the caller at the same time and kind of keep them calm and speak to them while then they dispatch their emergency services as well. So, on this day, we just want to encourage everyone to just keep, you know, keep tabs on your friends and loved ones, encourage them to reach out for any help or support. And I do want to share one memorable call that we had recently. A young lady called one evening, and our staff shared it with our whole team the next day anonymously, of course, but she called and she said, "I'm not in crisis, but I wanted to call and let you know that I'm getting married next week." Sorry, this one was really special. She said, "I'm getting married next weekend, and I called the Lifeline a few years ago, and the counselor I spoke with, I credit her for saving my life." And she said, "I wouldn't get married next week. I wouldn't be here to get married next week if it wasn't for the Lifeline, and I just want you to share with your staff how much of an impact they can have on anyone who calls that is in crisis and to keep doing the good work." So, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming to share that with us. We wish you, this is the first full year, is that right, of nine eight eight?
It is. We started, the Lifeline Center down here started twenty twenty-two of July.
Oh, wow. The time has flown.
And nine eight eight day started twenty twenty-three, so September eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
You have it good. No, just, that's, so happy to hear that this is available to citizens and that the word is getting out. It's so important. Anything we can do to help spread that word, we're happy to do it.
Thank you so much.
Just thank you guys for what you do, and it is tremendous. Somebody with a law enforcement background understands that sometimes law enforcement isn't equipped to deal with the mental health crisis that we have in our, in all of, all the communities around the state and around the country. So, to have something extra and to see the numbers that you guys are doing now certainly are better equipped to deal with that mental health crisis. So, thank you, guys.
Yeah. Thank you all so much.
I noticed your theme compassionate help anytime, anywhere. It sounds like we are way down the road to achieving that. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much.
And now, bringing good news as always, is our EMA Director, Mike Evans. Please come to the mic.
All right. Commissioner, I'm not so sure I'm a special guest. My wife tells me I'm special, but I think she has a different meaning for that, so we won't get into that. Now, Jay Ross told me at the door this morning, I had to be the briefer brilliant, so I'm not brilliant, so I'll be brief. So, thank you, Jay. But I stand before you today, September is National Preparedness Month, so I will ask y'all the question, Commissioners, would you like the good news or the bad news? What you want first? You want the bad news? I'll give you the bad news. The bad news is, we're about halfway through the tropical Atlantic hurricane season. So, is there a significance for September the eighth? Not really, but we're close. Today's a beautiful day, that's what's significant, but in two days, September tenth, is what we call the peak of tropical Atlantic hurricane season. So, if we were looking at it like this, we're about right here. Wednesday, we'll be here, and then hopefully, it'll start doing this. So, the opportunities for storms should diminish, but that don't mean we won't get one, so we're back to preparedness. So, our theme right now is it's up to you to act. It's up to you to act. Who is you, you is everybody. And empowering individuals, that's what we need, families and communities. You know, we can tell people what to do. I mean, there's been recent events where we've had issues. We can tell people what they need to do. We can warn them, but that don't mean they're going to do it. So, those individuals have to receive that warning and take action and do the appropriate thing, so that's what we're striving to do. Why this theme matters locally, you know, Mobile County, we have our share of hurricanes, floods, severe storms, hazmat incidents, and many, many more. So, it matters, and so, preparedness for us isn't an abstract. And basically, I tell people, start where you stand, start with yourself. What does this do if we can get people to take ownership and get prepared wherever they're at? Fewer calls for assistance, less strain on our resources, and faster community recovery. So, that's what we're about. And so, those key actions that we need to consider while we're getting prepared, you know, note, one thing, we have a new campaign at EMA, know your evacuation zone. So, if you go out on our website or use our app, there's a thing where you can look at it. It will tell you what evacuation zone you're in. It will tell you what resources are there, like shelters. It will tell you what your concerns are. Know your alerts, okay? There is a lot of information out there in the world today. I'm not going to tell you most of it's good. So, when it comes to hazards, you need to get alerts from the right sources. Now, Commissioner Doitt, just like me, you know, I know, I'm going to tell you, don't go to Uncle Bubba's weather page. Uncle Bubba and them's not putting out good stuff, but go to the National Weather Service, go to the National Hurricane Center.
What's wrong with Uncle Bubba? Hold on a minute.
Uncle Bubba's good. He just, he's not, he's a social media meteorologist and not, in fact, a meteorologist, so that will be my caution, but what I'm saying is, get your information from a reliable source. Hey, our local media, our local station's meteorologists do a fantastic job. They have a weather app, so whatever station you prefer to watch, download their app, but also download Mobile County EMA app. Have a plan. Are you going to evacuate? What are you going to do? Who are you going to call? What actions are you going to take? Where are you going to go? Build a kit, food, water, medication, copies of important documents, and we have these nice handy-dandy document to keep them safe, you know, use that as you prepare those documents. Stay informed, again, credible sources. Use credible sources. Hey, a great thing to have is a NOAA weather radio. If you don't have one, they're twenty-nine ninety-nine, go buy one. Keep it on, it'll wake you up in the middle of the night, I promise you. What are we doing at MCMA? We're pushing this information. We're using all sources, media, social media, we're going to outreach. Anybody that'll have us, we go do outreach. Working with everybody, we work with everybody, the municipal governments, the school systems, the community groups, anybody that wants to work with us, we work with them. So, now, I'm going to charge y'all, Commissioners, here's my call to action for my Commissioners. Encourage our citizens that you represent to make preparedness a personal goal. And so, share all the EMA resources, and I know I can tell you, Cherie and her team help us a hundredfold. Everything we do, they do, which gets us in front of more individuals, you know. Support and highlight local preparedness events, and at the end of the day, we need to make sure our citizens understand the hazards, and they need to continually monitor that credible source. So, you know, we can warn our citizens, we can warn them, we can tell them what's going to happen, we can tell them how bad it's going to be, but we can't get them to act. So, we've got to get them thinking in the right preparedness mindset, so when we do, in fact, warn them, they'll do the right and appropriate thing we need them to do to keep them safe, because once they're safe and the event's over with, we're good. They can go back into that area that they might or might not be, need to be in because of floods and surge and figure out what it is that, you know, how to pick up the pieces. So, when households are prepared and our communities prepared, everybody's prepared. So, Preparedness Month starts where you stand. We just need to get everybody thinking, understanding the hazards, and getting ready. So, I appreciate the time. I look forward to seeing y'all, and I'll be back when Cherie tells me to be back.
Thanks, Mike.
Do we have any speakers?
We have one more speaker signed up, and that's Cindy Nolan, and she would like to introduce her new 4-H educators.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Nolan, County Extension Director at the John Archer Center on ten seventy Schillinger Road North. Thank you again for your continual support this morning. I'd like to introduce two of our three new 4-H educators, 4-H youth educators. To my left, I have Kimberly Hatchett, and she's brand new, third weekend, and she comes to us from the public school system, from Bryant High School as a career tech teacher. And to my right, I have Peyton Brooke Fulford, and she comes to us from theater arts, theater and performing arts background. And we also have Katie Werneth, who has her degrees in horticulture, who's actually fifty percent 4-H and fifty percent Master Gardener. And so, I just come thanking you again for your annual support and appropriations. We are excited for this year and the years to come because we have a clean slate with 4-H. We are going to just bust the doors open with youth programming, and Kimberly's already looking, already has met with folks in her part of the county, and then Peyton Brooke has gone up to Chickasaw, and Katie's all over the place also. And with that being said, you have in front of you a flyer. We have an upcoming open house. I know it's short notice, this coming Wednesday from ten thirty to two at the John Archer Center, and it's in conjunction with our Auburn Tiger Giving Day. And Auburn Tiger Giving Day, it's a twenty-four-hour fundraiser, it's a grassroots fundraiser that the university approves certain projects within the state of Alabama, and these funds, you can go online and donate to one of several projects. And over the course of ten years, over three hundred and sixty-five projects have been funded, bringing in six million dollars on this twenty-four-hour grassroots giving day. But one of those projects this year is our four M camp, and it is actually the first outside of campus project that was approved for this year. And this four M camp, you see where it will be a three-day camp we bring to youth, not just once, but several times within the course of, I hope, one or two years in different parts of the county. We'll teach them about money, math, meals, and manners, and those are the four Ms. So, we're excited that we were chosen, our project and our program was project, was chosen this past year, and so, I wanted to have the open house to just bring all that together, and with the open house, we'll have our agents there promoting their programs, highlighting their programs. We're going to have a slew of Master Gardeners, it's their general meeting that day as well. We'll have networking, food trucks, giveaways, all the good stuff. So, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you and welcome.
No one else has signed up to speak this morning.
All right, Mr. Kerr.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item one, approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Two, approve sponsorship agreement with Downtown Mobile District Management Corporation doing business as Downtown Mobile Alliance in the amount of sixteen hundred dollars for its annual luncheon on Friday, October third.
So moved.
Second.
Three, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Medical Museum in the amount of five thousand dollars from District One Education Funds to assist with distribution and marketing cost for the documentary Medicine and the Movement: The Story of Dr. Escusby Good of Alabama.
So moved.
Second.
Four, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty cents from District Three Education Funds for a security fence at Alma Bryant High School.
So moved.
Second.
Five, approve sponsorship agreement with the National Organization of Black County Officials doing business as the Alabama Association of Black County Officials in the amount of one thousand dollars from District One Commission Funds for its empowerment conference and retreat on October third through October twenty-third through October twenty-fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Six, approve sponsorship agreement with Loaves and Fishes Community Ministries in the total amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars for its Central Midtown Family Festival on September thirteenth with funds divided as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Seven, rescind action of the Mobile County Commission in the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes, Agenda Item Number Fifteen, approving appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of four thousand, forty-eight dollars from District One Education Funds for Mattie T. Blunt High School.
So moved.
Why aren't we rescinding that?
They weren't able to go.
Okay. Second.
Eight, approve authority to execute application with Bankers Fidelity Life Insurance Company doing business as Atlantic American Employee Benefits to provide optional whole-life insurance to county employees pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Nine, approve dependent care flexible spending account limit update increasing from five thousand dollars to seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Ten, approve alcohol license application to transfer retail beer and retail table wine license from Si Pranum to Grand Bay property for Country Corner on Grand Bay Wilmer Road South in Grand Bay.
So moved.
Second.
Eleven, approve reappointment of Dr. Neil Sasse to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of Dolphin Island Water and Sew Authority for a term of six years.
So moved.
Second.
Twelve, authorize advertising for bids for Strickland Youth Center Lightning Protection.
So moved.
Second.
Thirteen, approve county match funding amounts for the Retired Senior Volunteer Program for program years two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Fourteen, accept hold harmless indemnity agreements for the use of county equipment from the entities as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Fifteen, authorize grant application submitted to the National Trust for Historic Preservation for its Preserving Black Churches Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Item sixteen, we will revise to add the words pending legal review at the end, and we'll read as follows. Approve contract with Virgil HR in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five dollars per year to provide an online employee handbook builder to provide software-as-a-service solution to assist the Human Resources Department with employee policies pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Seventeen, authorize read advertisement of request for qualifications for design professional code compliance to provide professional evaluation, design, and administrative services for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Disaster Recovery Grant due to no bids received.
So moved.
Second.
Eighteen, authorize letter of support for the Nature Conservancy's proposal to the Environmental Protection Agency for a Delta Stormwater Project Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Nineteen, approve memorandum of understanding with Spring Hill College allowing for a preferred tuition benefits to Mobile County employees and their immediately, immediate family members.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty, approve agreement among Mobile County Commission, the Department of Human Resources, and the Mobile County Investigation and Recovery for prosecution of child support in the amount of two million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents, a hundred percent reimbursable to Mobile County Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-one, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-two, approve renewal of subscription agreement with No Before in the amount of five thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars for email security awareness training for the County Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-three, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Earl Dudley in the amount of one thousand, two hundred dollars for a Global Positioning System Reference Station Network for the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-four, approve annual renewal of subscription agreement with Intuit QuickBooks in the amount of two thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars for QuickBooks plus desktop subscriptions for the Community Corrections Center.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-five, approve thirty-six-month lease agreement with Xerox Corporation in the amount of one hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-nine cents per month under the current state of Alabama contract for one Xerox copier for the Mobile County Legislative Delegation.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-six, approve sponsorship agreement with the University of South Alabama in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from District Three Education Funds for its Ladies Fish Tagging Workshop, subject to paperwork and legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Items twenty-seven and twenty-eight were voted at conference. Twenty-nine, approve professional services agreement with Renee Dials doing business as Dials Video Production in an amount up to fifteen thousand dollars for a series of videotaped interviews related to the Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District to be paid from District One Education Funds.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty, approve proposed and final plat of resubdivision of Lot Ten Red Oak Estates.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-one, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds from property owners for the projects as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve supplemental agreement number one with APAC Alabama for Project Bush Lane and Carroll Plantation Road Resurfacing Restoration and Rehabilitation for the following projects, increasing the contract amount by projects, increasing the contract amount by seventy-six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-five cents to a new contract total of three million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and one cent, and extending the contract time by twenty-one days.
Some moved.
Kim, have you had an opportunity to go out to Bush Lane when it rains?
No, sir, not, not while it's raining.
Next time it rains, you or Neil, ride out there and take a look. I, I have, and every time it rains and I go through there, I forget to call you, but make sure there's not, make, make sure there's not an issue over there. For me, to me, there appears to be, but I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I do drive and seems like there's some water puddling up Neil on the road that's not in a, not even near a drain. Like just kind of keep an eye on that. I think I told, I had mentioned it to you once before and I just don't want that to slip away bef, for us. I don't want us to accept it on a sunny day and nobody from in-house driven down on a rainy day.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thirty-three, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Dolphin Island Streets Resurfacing.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-four, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreement for Track thirteen on Moore's Road in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars for Project Moore's Road Gray Drain Base and Pave.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-five, approve final plat only of Long Meyer Estates.
Some moved.
Second.
Commissioners, we have one add-on this morning. Add-on number one, adopt resolution assenting to vacation request by Juanice Waltman of a portion of a right-of-way of Old Cherry Drive East as shown on map prepared by Smith, Clark, and Associates of Mobile doing business as bird surveying dated August twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Some moved.
All right, just one second. John and Tim, I, I appreciate you guys getting this done. And the reason I've asked for it to be an add-on, not that I have to give an explanation, I guess, this has been going on since February with no fault to the county. But I received a call from Ms. Nisi, she's trying to build a house. She doesn't, she's not necessarily building on anything, we're vacating, but because of the offsets and perimeters that we have, it kind of put her house way further from the road than she wanted to be, and she had some issues with whomever her original survey company was getting the paperwork to us. And so I wanted to thank John and, and Tim for really getting this done and, and I appreciate y'all letting it be an add-on today so that we can, so that she can start building her house from that second.
Thirty-six, commission announcements and or comments?
I just, Cherie, are you going to talk about? If not, I can, but anyway, we're, we're having groundbreaking today for the City Docs Project, which is a, uh, Bilabatri, City of Bilabatri, Town of Bilabatri's, uh, project that the county is administrating. And that's at two o'clock this afternoon, so I just wanted to mention that and invite everyone out to participate if you can come. Thank you.
This project was funded by Osfield Funds.
That's right.
Keep on giving. Do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right.
Thirty-seven, approve request for motion to adjourn until September twenty-second.
Some moved.
Second.
Have a great week.